Here.
And Mayor Holly.
Here. Thank you very much. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Murray.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as strong.
Okay, thank you all. I hope everyone had a good holiday season and we're having exciting 2014 ahead of us, I think. So, under acknowledgements though, Councilmember Shalong wanted to say something.
Thank you, Mayor Holly. A little bit of sad news tonight, but something I thought worth mentioning. A gentleman who used to attend almost every single council meeting and also participated in our sewer rate study has always a very positive influence to everybody that he was around. Jim Gibson passed away last night. And he'd been living with assistance over the last year and was very ill. Anyway, he kept in touch with Charles Slert and I on a pretty regular basis. And he's just a really wonderful man, and I just thought it'd be nice to honor him this evening with a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. We have approval of the regular meeting minutes from December 16th, 2013. Receive and file warrant claims listed for the period of December 17th, 2013 through January 6th, 2014. And receive and file the bi-liqui payroll reports for the periods ending December 14th, paid on December 20th, and for the period ending December 28th, and paid on January 3rd. So, are there any questions on the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any public comment on the consent calendar? Very good. It's been moved and seconded that the entire consent calendar be approved. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Holly.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, under reports and presentation, we have a special presentation tonight by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority on the Runway Safety Area Improvement Project and the Terminal Replacement Project. Mr. Platsom.
Yeah. Mayor Holly, members of council, Susan Doherty, thank you, make sure I say the name right, is here to make that presentation from the airport authority.
I would like to thank Mr. Palazzo for inviting me here tonight to update you all on the Runway Safety Area Improvement Project and the Terminal Replacement Project that are in the works and have been in the works for quite some time. This slide shows the overall view of the airport. It shows you the airport improvement project, which of course, because the RSAs are for runway safety areas, they are at the end of each of the runways. And then you see in the blue section over to the southeast of the runway is where the terminal will eventually be, right off of Dale Rupert Road. A runway safety area is the surface that surrounds the runway and is prepared and suitable for reducing the risk of damage to airplanes in the event of an undershoot, overshoot, or an excursion from the runway. All three things that you hope will never happen, but you want to be prepared for. The 2006 Department of Transportation Appropriations Act requires that every commercial airport in the United States meet the improved runway safety area standards by December 31st of 2015. This slide shows runway 1735, which is the one that, excuse me, runs from south to north at the airport. On this particular runway, by simply moving a threshold at the north end of the runway, we're able to create the runway safety areas that are required without disturbing too much of the wetland area out there. There's 300 feet on one end, and I believe like 150 on the other that would be disturbed. With these, on this particular runway, 1735, we would be doing grading at both ends of the runway. Obviously, we would have to also replace the runway indicator lights that exist at the end of the runways. On this runway, 1129, which is the one that runs from west to east generally, we tend to come in over there. It requires more in that there's a good thousand feet on each end that's going to have to be graded and prepared for the runway safety areas. Again, all lighting would have to be replaced at the ends of the runways. And this is the runway that is set up for non-visual landings, and so there's a lot of equipment there that requires the FAA to be involved as well in helping relocate that equipment. Because of the 16 acres of wetlands that are being displaced or impacted by this project, we have to do a great deal of mitigation that has to be offsite. Currently, we have an immediate need for funds to complete some environmental work to meet permit conditions. It's going to take probably another 600,000 to 800,000,000 beyond what is currently available in grants that we have. And this work needs to be completed, the majority of it, in the first quarter of 2014 prior to the actual grant award for the RSA project, which would be a little bit later in the year. We had hoped to be able to include this work in the last grant cycle with the Federal Aviation Administration, but when we were bumped that one month by the Coastal Commission, it meant that we didn't have our permit yet that was required for us to go into the FAA to get that grant. With that, we would hope that most of that would have been covered. We're going to be submitting that, excuse me, that work along with the grant application that we will prepare at the end of this spring for funding, but there's not a guarantee that we'll get that money back. So, we're currently looking for financing for the 600,000 to 800,000 so that we can be moving forward with the project. The RSA work is supposed to be completed, must be completed, before December 31st of 2015. And that project has to come before the terminal project. The construction bidding will begin early in 2014. This particular type of grant application has to be based on bids, so the bidding must be completed before we can submit for the grant. We anticipate submitting that towards the end of this spring. We have an FAA intent to fund. We know that the funds for the RSA project are programmed in for their budget, but we have to be able to assure them that we have matching funds, which are estimated at 1 million, which is 5% of the total estimated cost of 20 million. Probably more than 60% of this particular project is going to be in the mitigation rather than in the construction. And maybe one of the key things here is that we have 95% of that funding that we feel pretty confident on. The award for the RSA project is anticipated for this June, and then we would begin construction in the fall of 2014. So, then on to the terminal. The terminal that we currently-
Can we ask a question before you move on?
Certainly.
So, it's my understanding then that you do not have the plans for the mitigation project to be bid on now?
The mitigation project, no. We do have the plans for the RSA project to be bid on, for the actual construction of the runway safety areas. The final plans for the mitigation sites themselves are not complete, no. We have estimates on the work, but we don't have the final plans. We are still negotiating and talking with Army Corps of Engineers. We do not have a final ratio from them yet on what the wetland replacement ratio will be. We do have from the Coastal Commission.
Okay, thank you.
So, the terminal, it's a, as designed currently, a 14,000 square foot terminal is set up for the continued service of the Brazillas that we're all familiar with now, that run about 30 passengers. There is a capacity to expand to larger aircraft should that eventually be needed. This is a picture as you come down Dale Rupert Road towards the terminal. The rainbow is not always going to be there, but the terminal would be. And this is coming from the other end on your way back out. This is the inside area. You can see the baggage claim area there, a nice wide corridor for foot traffic, lots of seating along the edges of the terminal itself. You see to the far end, an area that goes up into a seating area, and that, you can see through the windows there, and there are vending machines. There's also a display case in the middle to maybe have revolving displays. This area is the upstairs, the only section that we have designed for a second floor on the terminal. And it would be a viewing area, a waiting area for people accompanying passengers. This area is downstairs, directly below, and it would be the holding area, replace the trailer that we have now. And it looks out to the south and is obviously much larger and more comfortable than what we currently have. This shows the overall layout. You see to the south side, it's a 180-car parking lot. We hope that the area coming down the middle will be covered as well, leading into the new terminal with the apron on the north side. That apron supports two of the Brazillas that we have currently, which, you know, quite often we end up with two on the apron at the same time, so there's plenty of room there for them. Plus, it keeps the general aviation in a separate part of the airport and allows for a little more room there, too. This is a floor plan. Down here, the circular area down towards the bottom is where the auto rental people would be. There is plenty of baggage area there. Over onto the right-hand side is the TSA offices. It would be the security area and baggage area. There is a setup for, you could have two airlines there as far as having ticket areas for both of those. And then over on the side of the second floor, as I said before, is basically the waiting area for people who are waiting for passengers or saying goodbye to passengers, waving goodbye. The terminal project, at the point we put this together, we felt what was contingent on the completion of the RSA project. It looks like, from what we've seen, programmed with the Federal Aviation Administration, as we get towards the end of just the construction of the runway's safety areas themselves, there will be federal funds available for us to begin the infrastructure for the terminal. To date, 2.6 million has been spent on the RSA project. The majority of that has been, of the match funds, have come through airport reserves. But we've also received money through the Connect Oregon 3 Rural Airport Grant Program to help pay for the match on that. And 2.9 has been spent on the terminal project, again with the majority of that money coming through airport reserve funds. We currently have a application in for a Connect Oregon 5 grant to help us with part of that 1 million on the RSA project. That money, I believe it's the final award on that, doesn't come till late July or early August, but we have submitted an application for grant funds of 400,000. We are continuing to pursue other grants as well, and we certainly hope that we get them, but we've learned repeatedly that it's not something you can count on. So, we are, we have hired General, I'm sorry, Government Financial Services is a firm out of Sacramento that is looking to assist us in finding long-term financing. In the interim, we are looking to our members and talking to our members about any of them that might be willing and able to help us with an interim loan. We will also be talking to our members regarding their ability and their willingness to help in the repayment of any loans that we do end up with. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I have one question. In order to accommodate the larger planes, do we have enough runway now, or would we have to also build out the runway?
No. Yes, we do have, and the accommodation is on the one runway that I showed you, the 1129, that is the longer runway that has the, that is also for the non-visual approaches. Would accommodate that airplane now.
So, it could accommodate a 71-person airplane?
Yes.
Now, okay, thank you.
We didn't, for some reason, I'm remembering that we had to make the foundations stronger for those jets?
I think that we would have to do a pavement overlay, but that is also beyond the terminal project because we do schedule out over a five-year period. And in, I believe it's 2019, that type of overlay work is-
Being considered.
-projected, yes.
Thanks, Susan.
Is that anyone else? No?
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this presentation? Anyone from the public want to speak? Okay, very good.
Thank you.
So, thank you for being here tonight. That was, that was great to hear that report, and I know Catherine sits on the board for us.
And Susan does an excellent job. She covers a lot of bases, including taking minutes at all the meetings and preparing the board vacants. She's stretched pretty thin there, but she does a terrific job, so thank you for all your hard work.
You know, next steps then, and I'm asking the council this, too. Would it be appropriate to direct Mr. Palazzo to have contact with the airport Board Authority and maybe bring back more information about the share of costs that is necessary and what the commitment would be?
That's an excellent idea.
Yeah, in fact, when I was on the Border Coast Regional Authority Board in for Catherine, we voted for Susan to start talking and discussing with the entities of the board to talk about the 5% match.
Okay, very good. So, Jean?
That's, yeah, so that's a good idea. We had talked about it at the previous meeting, but we weren't quite sure where we were going, but all the entities that represent the JPA were aware that there would be, there would be an ask from each one of us to help support this, and it's one of our economic engines to have us do this. And it would really be nice to get the terminal so we look like the big kids.
Yeah.
Bob, would the JPA, would the JPA need to be revised? As from what I remember, it basically laid out that none of the members that joined after the county would make any financial input.
It didn't really say that. It said that the JPA could not assess the members. In other words, could not force the members or require the members to come up with money. But the JPA is authorized legally and by the agreement to borrow money, and on a voluntary basis, any member can make any contribution that it wishes.
Okay.
So, you wouldn't be kicked out of the authority if you didn't make a commitment? But-
I just, I just was, and I know you're right. I just remember that the county had more members on the JPA than any other member because we did not contribute financially. So, if, I mean, how would that, would that structure be maneuvered if, let's say, the city decided to make a financial investment?
You know, I don't think that that, I don't think the two are hand in glove. I don't think they necessarily are tied together. I think the county had more members because they owned-
They own the land.
-entirely. And then, so they basically put it up for others to have a say in governance, and because of that, and because they had a lot of, at that time anyway, they had all the experience, and because they're putting in 270,000 a year, which is probably more than anybody else is ever going to put in, even if, even if the other entities said, yes, we're going to start making annual contributions, as opposed to, this ask is really for, you know, either loan funds or backup to repay a loan. It's probably not going to ask for 270,000 from any one member like the county's doing.
And our CDBG funds, I know that we were, we had to pass on providing funding for the airport, but was that all because of the TIG, or was it just that the project didn't meet the criteria, or we didn't have the information?
No.
I can't remember.
As I recall, you know, that was subject to the targeted income group on who was, you know, working and employed at the airport and meeting that targeted group of income. Kind of got pretty complicated.
Job creation.
Job creation, just like the harbor that we didn't get to, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, I take my directions, you know, sit down, work with the airport, and come back to the council with kind of a briefing on what I learned and can look at it a little bit more closely.
Very good. We look forward to getting that future report, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you for being here again. You're welcome to stay to the end of the meeting if you want. Okay. Under communications, this is the time for our public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be a part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Please comment, public comment is limited to three minutes. So, based on all that, is there any public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our public hearing section of the agenda. Tonight, we have a public hearing to conduct on the nuisance abatement for 708 J Street, APN 118-240-29, otherwise known as the City Center Motel. Mayor, Mr. Taylor will present this item. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. I'm going to conduct a nuisance abatement hearing for 708 J Street, probably most commonly known as this old City Center Motel. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the property. Nuisance abatement proceedings began against this property back in 2008. The property was actually put into receivership at that time. As part of that receivership process, the owners were living in the property back then, and they were allowed to remain, and so they were allowed to keep the, kind of the front office, check-in space, the manager's unit, the laundry facility, and I believe two additional rooms were also still remaining. The rest of the structure was burned during a fire training burn. Subsequently, the owners vacated the property. It had set vacant for several years up to this point. Then back in, it was May 2013, I received a complaint from the Crescent City Police Department about people illegally entering the structure. At that time, I contacted the responsible party, which helped, they helped board up the building and secure it. Then again, in August of 2013, I received a second complaint from the Crescent City Police Department. Myself and the Crescent City Building Inspector, when conducted inspection of the exterior of the building, again, numerous health and safety code violations, building code violations, and violations of the Crescent City Municipal Code. And at that time, the building inspector also had noted that the power and the propane were still actually active and running on that property. So then, subsequently, the following day, we issued a legal notice in order to repair or abate. That's attached to the report, or we've seen that. And this notice is actually issued, it's pursuant to the Crescent City Municipal Code, the California Building Standard Code, and the California Health and Safety Code, and more specifically, Section 17980 of the California Health and Safety Code. But tonight, we're actually, we're holding a public hearing in accordance with the Crescent City Municipal Code, and so part of that process, we gave 30-day notice in order to abate that has since come and gone by, I think, over 108 days at this point. So, we filed a public hearing notice that was posted on the property and sent to all interested parties, including the owners. And in that notice, this is basically based on our municipal code, it sets up the standard how the notice has to be prepared, and it also asks for municipal code violations. And so, we cited 8.08, 8.020, A, X, C, and V. And just quickly, A basically says any violation of titles 6, 8, 9, 12, 15, or 17 of our code is considered a violation. C is buildings or structures which are partially destroyed, abandoned, or permitted to remain in a state of partial construction for more than six months or beyond any period of extension after the issuance of building permit. V is any building or structure which is structurally unsafe or which lacks adequate ventilation, sanitation, or plumbing facilities are not provided with adequate egress, or which constitutes a fire hazard, or use that constitutes a hazard to safety and health of the public. And then X, it's any other condition declared by any state, county, or city statute, code, or regulation to be a public nuisance. So, again, that ties back into the Health and Safety Code and the California Building Standard Code. And I have a PowerPoint presentation I'll present at this time. And so, as part of our investigation, we go out and we document the violations, and so I'm going to present a few of those. Part of the hearing tonight is to present the evidence. Council will hear the evidence, hear any objections from property owners or any interested parties, and make a determination. So, this is the east side of the building. You'll be looking west from J Street. Took some shots going around the entire property, so this is the north side of the building. West side of the building. And then the south side of the building. Again, most of the California Health and Safety Code and Building Standard Code violations are structural damage. You can see we get a lot of dry rot, just from lack of maintenance. Again, this is the eaves. The structural supports for that, you can see they're actually, if you look down here, it's completely rotted away. It just has some mold or something growing in there at this point. And a lot of the damage is caused from the lack of weatherization, of weather protection, which obviously, the lack of the roof shingles and the deteriorated roofing on the property. Again, here's kind of structural supports for the front portion of that overhang. You can see they're separating, detached by several inches. And again, you know, I'm not sure what happened back in 2008. It looked like what they had done, just cut away that section of the building, and I think they demoed it, but it obviously exposed all of this to weather and dry rot. Hazardous conditions, as I mentioned, that the utilities were still connected to this property back in August. It's a little concerning because we did have a lot of exposed wires, and these, again, we haven't even, we never even went inside of the building. We're just documenting basically what we see from the outside, and there, I mean, there's enough there for the case. So, all of this exposed wiring is open to anybody that happened to come along. This one was a little concerning. It was obviously ground level, and you have open outlets. Again, broken windows, broken glass, it's obviously a hazard. And these are all, almost all the windows are broken out of the structure. Now, this is all broken glass, and this is actually the driveway as you go entering into the property. And again, these nuisances attract other illegal activities. It's all tied together. When you look at code enforcement and law enforcement activities, we have people illegally hanging out at the property, graffiti. we have people illegally hanging out at the property, graffiti, open containers, consumption alcohol in public. This is actually using this as a restroom facility. And I'm, you know, not trying to gross anybody out here, but this really brings to light, this is in a residential neighborhood, and this is what's going on right across from these folks' houses. Again, illegal fires, campfires going on. And there are actually, somebody, you could see it was tearing the door off. They tore the sheeting that was on the door, and that's what they used to burn, to burn their materials for the fire. And then you can see how the smoke, and I'm sure embers and all, it was traveling up inside these eaves. And it's, again, you have the threat of, you know, uncontrolled burns out here. And if you look at a lot of the older structure in the area, you do have some shake roofs. It creates a hazard. And then again, you get the blight, you know, people know it's a vacant property, so they start illegally dumping their trash. A lot of trash that just accumulates around the outside of the property, and old carpeting, shopping carts, clothing. Assigned structures, again, this is back to any violation of the municipal code. Our municipal code's pretty clear, if a sign, if a business has been out, a sign's left for more than a year, it need to be removed. Obviously, these have been there for seven years now. And they're in a hazardous condition. You can see all the deterioration, the rust damage, lack of paid maintenance. Same for this one, exposed wiring. Actually, all this is all rusted out, the sign faces were all rusted. Again, as part of the municipal code for the proceedings, we have to post the notice as well as we mail it, and I provided documentation that the notices were mailed and received. And it just shows the noticing of the public hearing. And again, we also posted a legal notice in order, and you can see the dates also on the bottom here. So we have two ways to go about the abatement. Again, what we're asking are recommendations. And staff is recommending that council finds the entire premises constitutes a public nuisance within the meaning of section eight point zero eight, zero point zero, and that's what defines a public nuisance in our municipal code. And recommended city council actions. It's basically order the nuisance to be abated in hold within sixty days of the council's determination that the condition upon the subject of property constitutes a public nuisance. Again, staff believes that sixty days is reasonable amount of time to abate the nuisance. And we've conducted several of these abatements ourselves, so we have a pretty good idea how long it takes to clear everything up. Two, direct staff to abate the nuisance if the property owner fails to do so by the compliance deadline. And three, we put in levy civil penalties in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars a day against the property. That's allowed by the CCMC section eight point zero eight two fifty. That section actually allows us for commercial structures to levy penalties up to twenty-five thousand dollars a day against commercial structures. Two hundred and fifty dollars a day is the minimum. We're asking if we add that in there in case the city does have to move forward with the abatement ourselves, or we add the extra penalties in there as well. My recommendation would be to levy the civil penalties. If the property owners or interested parties abate the nuisance, then we would just waive those penalties, which we're owed in our right to do so.
Eric, I thought they had already agreed to let the city do it.
No, I mean, that's what we have to have the hearing tonight, is to declare that there is a public nuisance.
But didn't we just have a meeting with them recently? Where they came to town and met with the city?
No, not currently, technically, the property owners right now are the Joshees.
Joshees, right.
In Sacramento, and we have not met with them. And they have been, they were noticed for this public hearing. I've received no response whatsoever.
I don't believe, okay.
Yeah, I have not.
I thought we were told differently.
That was back in August, when we gave the initial notice, but I think they were here because they had a court up here. It was a separate matter with the court.
Right, but from what we were told, they were here and they were cooperative, and they told the city to move forward.
Actually, my conversation with them was they were going to court, and they were gonna see what happened at their court hearing. And then, you know, they did throw out a comment, you know, that they were willing to cooperate. They didn't make any motions to move forward, nor have they moved forward or come forward to abate this. I mean, the original notice was sent out in August. They were given thirty days to abate at that time.
Right, and they can't, it was my understanding they couldn't afford it, and they were cooperative and...
Yeah, that was never a conversation that I had.
I think they've always been kind of cooperative.
Yeah.
But we have a procedure we have to follow.
Right.
Before we can go on their property, we wouldn't rely on their verbal representation.
Right, right, but I just think it's important that that be said.
I think that's right. I think it's only fair, but on the other hand, this is the city, as Mr. Plotso whispered in my ear, this is the city moving forward, so when they said we can move forward, we are.
Right.
Yeah.
And I understand that.
So again, the Crescent City Municipal Code allows, if the determination of public nuisance does exist, allows the council to direct the city manager to abate the public nuisance. We can do so basically two methods. One is to hire an outside contractor to conduct the abatement, or we can conduct it with city forces. We recommend if we need to go that direction, we use city forces. It's more economically feasible. Obviously, it's better all the way around, that we don't encumber the property for too much cost. And so based on some of the, most of it based on the L patio cleanup that we conducted, we presented some initial cost estimates. I think they're fairly accurate. I did hear back today on an estimate for the removal of the asbestos in the property. I think the estimate was about fourteen hundred actual, and we'd estimate about three thousand. Again, prior to any type of demolition activities that can happen, all the asbestos has to be abated. During the initial proceedings back in two thousand and eight, they had, they had conducted the asbestos inspection, and the report was prepared. And it looks like, based on that report, there's about a hundred and fifty square feet of some flooring that contained asbestos. It's mostly the mastic, the glue that's there, so there's not a whole lot there to be removed. Again, the total.
Is there anything in the budget for after, you know, the backhoe and the dump truck and everything is out of there? Last time we did this, there was a lot of concrete leftover.
Yeah, so I'll...
It looked pretty bad.
Yeah, I'll run through this real quick. So we look, we have the cost line I'm here for asbestos. I put this in because there's some materials within the structure itself, and furniture and stuff, depending... Depends on what they say they can and can't burn, what they want removed, so I put contingency in there for that. Again, the dump truck and some dump fees. I think this is what we're handling. Again, then the post-burn cleanup, this is for the operator, and this includes the dump truck, the backhoe, a bobcat for breaking up the concrete in the driveway and all that material. Again, back in the, for the L patio, we were able to recycle a lot of the concrete and the scrap metal, so there wasn't a lot of cost associated with dumping that, so we anticipate people do that again. So yes, that's worked in to actually remove of the foundation and everything, that's raising the property. That's the evidence that basically we have to present. I think it's a pretty clear, clear cut, so I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions from the council?
I was driving by there yesterday, not for this purpose, but I didn't notice any children playing around there, but it really worried me when I saw the electrical outlets and finding out that, you know, that the power was still on and glass and all that, so we haven't had any kids, have we? Or it's just adults that have been living in there, or do you know?
Yes, and we back up a little bit too. In August, we did, the building inspector did notify the power company and the natural gas, or propane company, and they did come out and disconnect the power, so it has been off since August. What was the rush of class? Sorry, you asked the others.
Worried about children hanging out there until we get something done.
I mean, it wouldn't surprise me if juveniles are hanging out on the property, looking at a lot of the graffiti and other activities are going on, so.
Okay, thank you. So is that all the comments from the council?
I just wanna say, on the notice of public hearing, it says January sixth, two thousand and thirteen. It's common typo, but is that gonna be any problems with any legal proceedings?
No, I think it's a simple clerical error that wouldn't, you know, be subject to any real misinterpretation.
So is there any public comment on this matter?
Michael Young, city resident. I seriously thought of wearing two hats tonight, because I'm gonna talk about this with two hats on. One of them is, could you show that for the first picture that you showed? What's that? The very first one, when you first opened the presentation. That's what I get to look at every day. That's where I live, right across the street from it. So as a property owner, I strongly support what the city is doing to abate it, to get something done with this property. It's a shame that it wasn't all burned.
I think your view looks great, nice blue sky.
It's a shame it didn't get all burned back in two thousand and eight, but that's a long history. We could go into what's happened. It happened the way it happened, and this is what we have today. And so in that sense, I would, I'm urging the council to adopt the recommendations by the staff. Okay, now I'll put on my other hat. Four of us, of which I am one of, one of the partners, purchased the note on this property with the idea of eventually developing something on the property. Myself, Jeff Mitchell, Don Hartley, and Darren McElfrish. For a number of reasons, which I won't get into all the history, we have attempted to foreclose on this property, which we now have an order from the judge to foreclose, so we can actually take ownership of it, but we'll still have to go through a redemption period and the like, and it's about a four-month process. However, we've simplified with getting something done. I obviously sympathize. Matter of fact, all the boards you see on those windows and doors, I personally put there with help from somebody over the years, and some of them I, they started before two thousand and thirteen. Some of them have been replaced because they have been torn off and put back up again. And we've taken the chance, if you want, of essentially stepping onto property that we don't own to do this work. You know, because I don't own it, or does our partnership own it? We hold a note on it, a note that we wanna foreclose on so that we will own it. And so on behalf of the partnership, which is the City Center Redevelopment Limited Partnership, we also want you to take action to abate it, because by you taking that action, it'll give us, strengthen us, our position to protect our investment in the property, to be able to step forward and move on to the property, or at least we feel we will, give us a better legal standing to be able to step actually onto property that we don't own to abate the nuisance. And I'm the one that got the bid, and it's fourteen hundred and thirteen dollars to remove the asbestos. We plan to do that hopefully between, somewhere between January twentieth and January thirty-first, right at the end of this month. And I've already talked to the fire chief. As soon as we have that out, we're gonna see about arranging for a practice burn. And I would hope that by the end of February, it won't be there. I would hope that on the basis of being the property owner that lives across the street, and I also hope so being a partner, of a person that has an interest in the property that we're, we're sitting in the process for closing on, that'll be gone. So, in a sense, I'm urging you to take the action recommended. Fire staff, sixty days seems reasonable. It's been a long process. I could spend a long time explaining how we've gotten to where we are and what we've gone through. Numerous lawsuits and everything to get to it, but we do now have an order from the judge, Judge Daly, to actually be able to sell the, or foreclose on the property, to take ownership of it. And this action, we believe, will allow us to go ahead and just move ahead and we'll just do the work.
So. Does the council have any questions on this?
Any questions, otherwise I'm...
Who will be taking the lead on this, the city or Mr. Young's group?
We will be. We will be taking it as an interested party on the property.
So you're not gonna charge us?
Nope. I don't know how we could.
So we don't have...
We'd love to, we'd love to, but we can't, no.
That's a little confusing to me, because the city's going to be putting forward the money to clean everything up and all the dump fees and all of the abatement costs.
We'll be bearing all the costs. Other than, the fire department doesn't charge for doing a practice burn, as I understand, and we'll be asking the fire department to do that as a practice burn.
Mayor, maybe staff can clarify, you know, the action tonight. That would be, that would be great.
Yeah, I can clarify it a little bit. Well, basically what we're proposing, we're asking you to make the determination that the public nuisance does exist. We're giving them the compliance deadline of sixty days. That is reasonable, we feel. According to municipal code, they have thirty days, the property owner has thirty days to appeal your decision in court. Then after that thirty days, we could proceed with the abatement if we need to. In the meantime, Mike's group, as interested parties, is a lien holder on this property. And this is common with a lot of banks as well, that have liens against properties. They are allowed to step in and protect their investment, and so they can come in if they choose and abate it themselves. So in that case, if they choose to do so, they will bear the expense of the abatement, and therefore the city, we won't have to do that.
So that ten grand that you just showed us in a budget is not our responsibility?
If nobody steps forward to conduct the abatement, then yes, it will become our responsibility. We will take action and abate it, and then we will be able to lien the property as a special assessment to recover our costs.
So I have several questions now. So how do you legally allow someone that is not the owner of the property, even though they have a lien on it, to move forward with this process?
I don't think, I'm gonna answer if I understand the question. We're not asking you to give us that authority. What we're saying is by your action, we're looking at the city as a public agency is threatening action against a piece of property in which we have an interest. We have an interest that we wish to protect. And to protect that interest, we're gonna step forward and do what the city is insisting that the property is gonna do. You're not giving us the authority to do it, in the sense of that we go and say, well, the city said we could do this. But we're using the action you take as the reason that we have a right to step forward and to assert the rights that we would have under law. Namely, our investment is threatened, we wish to protect it, and...
Bob, am I not correct that even though we deem this a nuisance, the Joshees are still the property owners? And that after it's been cleaned up, that if they wanted to, and I'm asking, could they sell the property and pay the nuisance abatement nine grand and pay their lien back?
Well, you added that last part about them selling the property, but let's just assume that they inherited a bunch of money and they wanted to step up and take care of business after the, after the abatement order is issued. They could do that. They could pay off the existing liens. They have a redemption, and I think that's what Mike mentioned. They have a right of redemption. I also think that people who are lien holders, like let's say a bank, let's say the mortgage holder on my property, if they do a drive-by and they decide that I'm not taking sufficient care of it to protect their interests, they have rights to step in. And in this case, you know, the people that own this mortgage that they have acquired have made a judgment call that it's important for them to step in and to enter on the property. And I think Mike nailed it perfectly, which is, they're not doing it under any authority that we grant them. We're not granting them authority to go on somebody else's property. What we are saying is that if we're creating a situation where if they don't protect their interests, we will take action adverse to their interests. It'll probably cost them more for us to do it, and it's only reasonable for them to go on and abate the property. It'll probably cost them more for us to do it, and it's only reasonable for them to go on and abate the property as lien holders. I know that, that's probably not very clear, but it's...
It's not very clear.
It's a decision that they're...
Because it makes me feel uncomfortable, having these four private citizens going onto property that they don't belong and, and having our fire department, which is our liability, do the burn, and our city crews, which is our liability, and yet we're not doing the process they are. So I'm very confused now.
We wouldn't use any of our city crews if they would have to abate it. It would only be a fire training burn through the fire department. They would hire a private contractor.
So, then, but your budget consisted of city crews?
That's if the city, if nobody steps forward to abate the nuisance after the 60 days, then what you're asking us then is to go in and abate it. So at that point, then city crews would go in and abate it.
Now, the action you would take tonight would be saying to the property owner or other interested parties, you better do something about it, and we're giving you 60 days to do it. And if you don't, then we'll step in and the budget that Mr. Taylor had put forth would be...
So even your group needs to wait 60 days for the property owner to...
Excuse me, I have to say that.
So even your group needs to wait 60 days for the property owner to...
Once you take the action tonight, I can start immediately. Because like, at that point, I feel that our, our investment is endangered, that we need to take action to protect it. And probably before the week out, I'll sign a contract to have the asbestos removed. So I've already got the bid and I've already told, verbally told the contractor that it's acceptable.
I think it's pretty clear that the liability is yours to do what you want to do.
Yeah, at that point, it's between that group and the current property owners.
But in order to get there, we have to make the, make the first finding of the nuisance abatement, and that seems pretty clear to me. So I'm comfortable with it.
I think the question of whether the fire department is a part of this is kind of a separate question. No one has asked, no one has asked my office to research whether the fire department can go in on this property at the behest of somebody other than the owners. So I think that's an answer that I can't give you. It's a good question. It's an answer that I don't have off the top of my head. But we would look at that as a separate question. That's not the only way to abate it, obviously. So there's, you know, there are some other options.
I've just never heard it done this way, so...
Well, the other option would be to wait the, go ahead and wait the 60 days. And then have their group do part of the abatement. We do the burn, they do the clean, you know, they do the asbestos, we do the burn, they do the cleanup. If the 60 days passes, we have clear legal authority to go on there. And they have the legal authority, according to their lights, to protect their investment. So we can do a hybrid situation with us doing the part of it that they really can't do themselves, which is the burn. So that'd be another option, would be start on day 61 instead of before.
Well, I, I mean, honestly, I feel torn because I want it gone and I want it cleaned up.
Right, but 60 days isn't that...
But I think about the property owner having, unless they just, you know, put something in writing that they have, they have no intention to protect their, their own property.
We have to write, we have to notice them of the council's decision. And we will send them your determination as well. They'll get that in writing.
I'm a little protective of the Joshees, and, and only because I was on this council, I shouldn't say of the Joshees, but I was on this council when we did the first receivership process on the other half of the building. And it was, it was, it was not a well-thought-out process on our end, is a nice way I'll put it. And so I, I just want it to be a fair process for them.
And I think this is a more fair process that we're going through.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
And they'll have all, all the noticing and, you know, everything we followed as prescribed in our municipal code.
I agree. It's just why I'm a little confused of having a third party go in and actually abate a property that's not, that they don't own, and, and it's our kind of liability and responsibility.
I mean, when you look at it, they're technically not owners as far as being on paper on a grantee, but they do hold the mortgage against the property. I mean, they do have a lot of rights on the property.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
I'm, I'm wondering, Eric, is it possible when we give them the notice, assuming that the board, the council moves accordingly, when we give them the notice, that we can give them some kind of a form to sign that allows us to burn it sooner than 90 days? I mean, can they, the 60 days, I mean, can they, can they agree and can we make it easy and convenient for them to return something to us?
That would certainly be an option.
Yeah, if they wanted to send something back in writing that says, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to challenge us in court, we give you full authority to go on there, I don't see why not.
Okay.
I would feel comfortable with that.
Okay. I just have a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that we'll ever get anything from them. They abandoned our town, they moved away. The neighborhood has been suffering for six years. I don't see them responding at all. The only reason they, the only reason they talked to the city is they were coming to court on an issue. They haven't responded to anything.
As a matter of fact, I'll speak to that just briefly. One of the delays we've had on foreclosure, it took us two years to find them.
Well, yeah, because...
We had to hire a private investigator to find the Joshees.
Yeah, well, if you want to get down to details, the city actually went in and burnt their property down, which needed to be taken care of, but it left them and their, they were, they had their grandchildren they were raising, and we did it kind of...
Well, I understand, but I'm saying is, is that it would be nice to have, and we've even attempted to contact the Joshees to get their release so we wouldn't have to go through the whole foreclosure procedure. And we're getting no response from them. And as I said, we, we started several years ago, and it took us a couple of years just to find them. You know, and we ended up, like I said, and probably investigated to trace them down, you know, so...
I know it's against the law.
I mean, if we could get their signature, that would be lovely, but I'm not going to hold my breath waiting for it.
Right, we'll send the notice and I'll, I'll make sure I include our contact information in there, and if they choose to do so, they can...
And I'd just like to point out that the property owners are responsible for the situation that they got themselves in. It wasn't like we went in and kicked them out of a really nice place and displaced their family. They unfortunately let the whole property run down and make the whole neighborhood almost a blight situation and reduce other people's property values. So I think we should move forward and know that the other property values in the neighborhood have suffered great...
Yeah, it'd be probably good to see, maybe look at two different cases. I mean, we're at the present, where we're at now. Unfortunately, we are where we are, and it's...
I'm not taking anything away from what you're saying, and I agree. I just have a little bit different perspective.
So before we bring it back to the council for action, I think I need to ask if there's any other public comment. Thank you, sir, for being here and for your comments.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, it's, what motion are you making?
A motion that we order the nuisance to be abated and hold within 60 days of the city council's determination that the condition upon the subject property constitutes a public nuisance. And stably 60 days is a reasonable amount to abate the nuisance considering the threat to health and safety of the community. The property owner has 30 days to appeal the council's decision to Superior Court. Therefore, abatement by the city may not be conducted until 30 days after the council's decision. I'll also direct staff to abate the nuisance if the property owner fails to do so with the compliance deadline. And also that we level civil penalties in the amount of $250 a day against the property as allowed by the Crescent City Municipal Code, Section 8.08.250.
Second, okay. And can we include in that the findings that a nuisance exists on the property according to the evidence presented by staff?
Yes, we can add that. I'm good with that, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I won't attempt to, to repeat that motion, but do you have that accurately, you think?
No, I'm going to listen to the, listen to the recording.
Discussion, please.
Okay, is there a discussion then, yes?
Yeah. Are we going to include that we will notify the property owner and ask for their cooperation or agreement? That their property may be burned down before 60 days is up?
Yeah, according to the, our municipal code, we have to notify them of the determination, and then I can definitely add a separate letter in there.
Yeah, we can add that. And you bring up a good point on, on the fire burn and, you know, with Mr. Black on the legal. You know, we do that legally on, on what we can do and cannot do, and there may be some creative ways, you know, waiting the 60 days before the city gets them all.
Okay, thank you.
And finally, Mr. Mayor, could I ask that you close the public hearing before the vote is taken? And that you incorporate the staff report and the comments of Mr. Taylor and the comments of Mr. Young into the record of this proceeding?
Wow, okay.
And will the $250 citation go towards the lien holder of the property or towards the property owner?
Well, the idea is that the $250 civil penalty will not be applied if the abatement occurs within the 60 days. If it does not occur within the 60 days, the penalty accrues to the city as a penalty, civil penalty.
It's a lien on the property.
And it will become a special assessment on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to close the public hearing at this point. And we want to include the testimony of Mr. Young, Mr. Taylor, and...
The staff report.
The staff report as a part of the record of this proceeding. Is that right? Okay, so are there any other comments or questions?
Sorry, just one more. The, the matter of the fire details, burn responsibility, how will we know what the outcome of that is? Will you get a report or an email or...
I can communicate to the council once we figure that out.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is an important matter, so would you please pull the vote?
I will, and I will like to note for the record that the motion where the three points listed under the recommended city council actions and the staff report, okay. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalang?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gasthno?
Yes.
And Mayor Hawley.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to continuing business, we have done, moving on to new business. Number six, authorize the city manager to sign an agreement for emergency management performance grant pass-through funding with Delnart County for security enhancements at water and wastewater facilities and emergency response barricades and signage. Mr. Palazzo, would you please give us...
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to have Mr. Weir present this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hawley, members of the council. Yes, what's before you tonight is the Emergency Management Performance Grant. This is a grant the city has received the last couple of years. So first, I'd like to give you just an overview of the, of the grant in itself. This is a federal grant that is, that is designed to assist state, local, and tribal governments in emergency management and emergency preparedness. In this year's funding, fiscal year 2014, there is over $330 million given out nationwide. Of that, California receives about $26 million, and of that, Delnart County receives about $130,000. That's population-based, so that's why the numbers sort of dwindled there towards the end. The one nuance with the EMPG funds is that it does require a 50% match. So of that $130,000 given to Delnart County, they only utilize about $80,000 for their emergency management program. That's with Cindy Henderson. So, in the past, in talking with Cindy, what used to happen to the remaining 50s, a lot of times they just had to give that back to the state because they couldn't use it due to the match requirement. Over the past couple of years, though, she's discovered a way to actually use those funds as a pass-through fund. So those funds were then given out to other agencies that applied for them. So that's where the city's gotten involved the last couple of years. So that's really what's before you tonight is to sign this pass-through agreement. In 2012, the city received, or completed a project for $57,000. That was the total project. So that only 50% was funded through this EMPG grant, but this was to purchase an emergency generator. This generator was in the budget that particular year for the city to purchase on their own. So this grant really became a, a value added to the city because it was, it was 50% funded through this grant. And the next year, we were successful in, in obtaining the grant to complete the water and wastewater security improvements. That added additional cameras, alarm, fence improvements, and access control. In this next year, we, we sat down, and this is what we do pretty much every year when it comes to EMPG, we sit down, city manager, myself, police chief, fire chief, sit down and try to prioritize the projects that would be eligible for this funding. Because not every project is eligible. It has to go towards emergency preparedness, emergency management, security of critical infrastructure, different things like that. So in this year, we, we went through, prioritized the projects, and we were actually authorized funding in the amount of $58,000. Again, this is total project amount, so this is only funded half by the EMPG funds. The projects that were, that were authorized were additional security improvements at the water and wastewater facilities. So this will be, again, it'll be additional cameras, it'll be improvements to the perimeter security at some of these critical sites. You can see the, the pictures here actually show some of the improvements that we did with, with last year's EMPG funds. So we have $20,000 total project cost to be allocated towards these improvements. $10,000 will be the city's match, and this will come out of the water and wastewater funds. The next item was a trailer-mounted electronic message board. This will be used by not only Public Works for water, sewer, street type of emergencies and traffic closures, but also for fire and police. So in case of emergency, we can actually notify the public of particular streets that might be closed, or in the case of a tsunami, that, you know, there's an evacuation going on and what routes to use. This, it was cost was estimated $23,000. $11,500 would be the city match, and this would be supported by all those funds I just mentioned. The final component of the city's grant for this year is to purchase additional emergency barricades and signage. So this would be those orange plastic K rolls they have now, cones, barricades, roseclothes, signs. We have $15,000 to go to this purchase. Of that, the city would be spending half, and Delnart County Road Department would actually be spending half as well. So that match would then be split 50/50, where the city needed to come up with about $3,700, and the Delnart County Roads coming up with $3,700 as well, $3,750 to be exact. So again, this would just provide emergency, emergency management signs to better deal with the emergencies that we might come across. We would be in cooperation with Delnart County, so if we had a, a large-scale emergency in the city, we would go to them, we would be able to borrow these barricades and vice versa if they needed ours. So, with that, any questions?
Kent Mercer-Frazier just offered to leave their orange cones so they don't have to take them back down to Eureka after they're done.
You know, I can propose that, as well as their, their four electronic message boards that they have for traffic control.
They really worked well during...
Might as well leave all their equipment too, right?
You know, I'm sure, I'm sure Jason Wiley would be very excited to have their, their excavator that they have.
Their signs really worked well during that street closure.
Good, good, yeah. That's not an easy street closure, and, and I thought they did well with their, with their traffic control plan.
They did excellent.
I thought there were problems.
No, I live right there, and there's more traffic on Third where I live, but I mean, otherwise, I think the project's going along beautifully.
Yeah, the project's going well. The closure of that Second and B Street intersection is a problem intersection because a lot of people, no matter what sort of signage you put out in front of them, they're not really going to realize it's closed until they get all the way down to Second and B, even though the detour was at Front and E Street. So, you know, until people get used to that, it does take a little bit of time.
I know we're off topic, but I remember what Kelly's talking about. I was talking about people running the stop signs. Yeah, that was it, but that's a different story, yeah.
Eric, I have a question about the message board. It said it's a solar message board?
It is. It's going to be solar powered.
And is there a backup or is solar it?
There's, there's back. I mean, it has batteries and whatnot, so yes.
Does it have a wind turbine attached?
A little windmill? Okay, so you've got that worked out.
There is back, yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? How about public comment? Anyone want to come forward with public comment? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the, back to the council for action.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement for the EM performance grant pass-through funding with Delnart County for security enhancements at the wastewater facility, water and wastewater facilities, and emergency response barricades and signage.
Second, okay, it's moved and seconded for this matter. Any other discussion on the matter by the council? Okay, would you please pull the vote? Jean, would you please... Jean, would you please pull the vote?
I can pull the vote. Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Hawley?
Yes, thank you.
You looked very nervous doing that. He was looking at us like he didn't know who we were.
At least we didn't make you move over to the other chair.
He was looking at our name tags. Who are you?
Thank you, Eric.
One small mistake could be fatal.
Okay, moving on to new business, number seven. Consider, and waif full reading, read by title only and introduce ordinance number 778 amending chapter 1.24 of the Crescent City Municipal Code establishing procedures for liens and special assessments to satisfy unpaid administrative citations. Mr. Palazzo?
Yeah, Mr. Black will present this item, Mayor.
You always got somebody else to do it, don't you? Mr. Black?
Black.
Black. I thought you said plaque.
He could probably do it.
Okay. Caught you by surprise here, didn't it, Chief?
Doug, this is a test. Have you read your agenda tonight?
We'll go with Black.
Okay. The government code provides, in certain circumstances, that money owed or levied by the city, if unpaid, can become a special assessment on the property taxes for a parcel of real property. And in the case that you just finished your public hearing on, which is the nuisance abatement, the Crescent City Municipal Code does provide for that remedy for uncollected civil penalties and uncollected abatement costs if the city incurs those costs. And we have seen this in action before. Some of our we debatement procedures actually went to special assessment, and we have actually collected the city's outlays from property tax payments made by those property owners. The government code allows for civil citations, administrative citations, excuse me, and does provide that one of the remedies for the collection of those administrative citations is special assessment on property taxes. Now, civil administrative citations, excuse me, can be written for property-related and non-property-related violations of the city municipal code. For example, a parking citation or something similar could be an administrative citation or treated as such. It's not really, it doesn't affect real property, and therefore it wouldn't go on property tax rolls. However, when the administrative citations are issued for nuisance-type or code enforcement-type offenses, they can go on the special assessment, and this ordinance amendment would allow that to happen.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Black? Okay, no question. Mr. Black, any public comment on this matter?
I do have a question. So this sort of seems like it's cleaning up what we already have so we can enforce the fines. And we've had this come before us in a different way. I think maybe we set this up first and then didn't have this language in the ordinance, so we're...
It wasn't in the ordinance. It's not clear to me. I didn't actually look at this question because I asked Ms. Luna, your deputy city attorney, to handle this matter, but the, I'm not sure that the authority to levy special assessments was part of the government code at the time you adopted your administrative citation ordinance. But one way or the other, it is part of the government code today, and it only makes sense to include all the available remedies. You, the city council, could always decide, you know, we're not going to use that particular remedy in this, in a given case.
Right, okay.
I think the solid waste authority already has something like this. It seems to me like when we abated the property out on Old Mill Road...
Yeah.
That was never gonna get paid, and it was put as a lien against the property.
Yes, and we already have that for abatement remedies. This is the administrative citation, which is a little different. It's used hand-in-hand a lot of times, but this is a little bit different. In the case of, well, one recent case, we actually had to file a lawsuit to collect administrative citations, which we would not have had to do if we had had this authority in the code. So we're trying to make it cheaper. This makes it cheaper, and pretty much inevitable that these will get paid because they go on the property tax.
I got you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ania, did you have something more? Okay, I think I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Okay, public comment. I thought I'd done that. Public comment. Okay, we'll bring it back to the city council then.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we waive full reading by title only. Introduce the attached ordinance 778 amending chapter 1.24 of the Crescent City Municipal Code establishing procedures for liens and special assessments to satisfy on-page administrative citation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move for ordinance number 778. Would you please pull the vote? First, are there any other discussion on that? I'm sorry, I forget that step. Any other discussion? Okay, would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gastinow?
Yes.
And Mayor Hawley?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we're now to city council items. Legislative matters, any information on new legislation or anything we should be concerned?
No update at this time. I think it's a new year. Legislators probably get back into session and...
Okay, I go from there. Catherine, do you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to remind the council that they could read, Sarah Rounds, our representative from the League of California Cities. She has the statutes that were passed in 2013 in case you want to be updated on that, and if the public's interested, they can contact City Hall on those.
Certainly, we recently got an email from her that tomorrow is the deadline to register new mayors and councilmembers academy.
Thank you.
For, let's see...
Are you trying to send Mr. Hawley off to Sacramento?
It's the January meeting, so it's the 22nd through the 24th. I didn't know if you'd planned to send anybody.
And I will say, we considered it, actually. I talked over Mr. Palazzo, but it was the same academy that Mr. Galatido and I went to last year.
Galatido?
Did I say Galatido? Okay.
See, that's why I was looking at names.
You know, some of those Italian names, they kind of... Mr. Gastinow and I went to that last year, and I think that it looked like the same.
I know where you went, and now I know why you're confused.
You can see it would do no good to send me again.
Yes.
Okay, well, enough on legislative matters. Let's move on to the city manager report and council directives. Mr. Palazzo?
Nothing to report this evening, but I did receive a directive earlier, earlier in the meeting, so we'll follow up on that.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay.
Oh, wait, I just want to ask, do we have an inordinate amount of streetlights that are out?
Yeah.
On the highway, we do at this point.
On the highway, anywhere else in the city? I was just making sure that, yeah.
Yeah, we got an email about like a whole area that was...
Right, yeah, they had, the highway went down, but there's other, besides the highway, other in...
No, it was like Seventh, where was it? Seventh and...
I can ask Mr. Weir to address that question. He may also want to give an update on second streets, or if the council would like that as well.
That'd be nice, okay. Eric?
Yes, mayor members of the council, the streetlight problem that I believe Councilmember Gastinow was referring to was caused by a vehicle accident. This was about a week ago, I think there was a traffic accident. They hit a streetlight pole at Seventh and M Street. Normally, that would just take one streetlight out. This particular pole is what they call a control pole, so it controls 15 other streetlights. It happens to be on the highway. It did some structural damage to the foundation, so it's not an easy fix. We have some calls into some different pole manufacturers. We actually need to get a pole. The poles on the highway are 30-foot poles, whereas throughout town, they're 25-foot poles, so we don't have a 30-foot pole to replace this with.
So Caltrans doesn't have any responsibility?
No, the city owns and maintains the streetlights along the Caltrans corridor. So, yeah, so that one is our responsibility, our liability. So that's accountable for 15 of the streetlights along the highway. There are a couple out throughout town. There's some in the Gainerd area that also involve a little bit more work than just simply replacing a light bulb, so that's where we're getting to those as we can. Things seem to go in waves on here in Public Works, so we've also had a strange amount of water leaks throughout the city, so our crews have been busy on dealing with those. We're also spent some time up in the Hauchi area lately.
Are we replacing any of the older lights with LEDs now?
You know, that is our, that's our plan. So before we actually pull the trigger on replacing all of them with LED lights, we want to do a photometrics on our streetlights to make sure that we have the right LED bulb, and then we'll start to implement that program.
I had a question. Have you ordered that new vehicle that has the bucket on it?
No, Jason Borges, our fleet manager for the city, is doing some research on that. He has a vehicle that he would like to propose, and so we're doing a little bit more research on that before we actually pull the trigger on it. But it is in the budget. It is one of the things that we want to see accomplished within the next, say, six weeks or so.
Okay. And also, as far as the pole that was knocked down, I understand that the insurance of the driver is being looked at as a possible funding source.
Correct. I believe Emily, Ms. Boyd, our finance director, is working with their insurance company, and the city police did a nice job with the police report and getting all that information.
Great, thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
I had a couple of things for city manager, just to keep it in front of you. The, I had mentioned the possibility of having the new generation committee get together and do a kind of a brainstorming session on economic development tools moving forward, so I just wanted to keep that in front of you. And then also wanted to ask if there's been any progress made on putting a matrix together that could be uploaded to the website on all the grants that we have. People ask, tend to ask that question quite a bit.
That's not completed yet, but we are, we'll get that completed here next couple of weeks.
Perfect, thanks.
Anything else for the city manager? Okay, let's go on to the council reports. Catherine?
I hope everyone had a nice and safe and happy holiday season, and I, it was such a long time ago. The only thing I want to report out is I'm delighted to report that I received a Happy Holidays card from the staff of the paper from Japan that did the interview with us when we had this, right after the tsunami, and I'm hoping that we'll keep that in mind, that we have not to forget the sister cities idea with the, I won't try and say the city's name that we sent the boat back to, but maybe consider that as our sister city. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gastinow. Gastinow.
Oh, you know, going on that tsunami, thank you. Theme, on the 19th of last month, they had a meeting with the tsunami's commemoration, 50th anniversary is coming up in a couple short months. A lot of stuff that we're doing there. We had emergency services, the historical society was there, local media, so we're trying to get a lot of stuff coordinated for that, especially during the 26th when the all-county drill for tsunami comes up. Let's see, what else did we do? Oh, I attended my first Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, and it was very interesting. We already talked about having the staffs work with each other to see if we can do about the 5% match so we can get our airport up and going and the construction on that. And let's see, I start on the solid waste management authority on the 8th, and so I got a nice tour of the facilities today from Ted Ward, the acting director, so that's pretty much what I did.
Thank you, Mr. Ania.
You know, I'm trying to remember, three weeks. I don't know if I reported on meeting with Congressman Huffman for Last Chance. I think that was right after our last meeting, and he's very much aware of the problems there, and we'll be working with his staff and Congress about looking into that. It's still a year and a half away with the Caltrans study, engineering study to be completed, and we saw different routes that could be used as alternates, and he's very interested in that, and is going to be keeping close attention to that, especially for federal funding. And serving on El Tico, the Local Transportation Commission, people ask me about that all the time, and I make it clear to them that we have no jurisdiction on US 101 at Last Chance. It's all federal government and Caltrans. It's not a local transportation committee. However, we do serve as an advisory to help them and to assist them, and they have asked for that. And so, but we don't, we can't, we don't have, we can't spend any money on that. It's outside of our jurisdiction.
That's because we're not eligible as the Local Transportation Commission for funding, and that's why we can't do anything.
Yeah. Later on this week, I'm going to be meeting with a assembly candidate, Jim Wood, who'll be up here and wants to find out some of the, he's been up here several times before, wanting to find out about what our local concerns are in Crescent City. He's a candidate, Democratic candidate for the state assembly for later on in November, and he's also a colleague. He's a Heelsburg city council member, and so I'll be talking to him about our needs for our area and for our city. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you. Recently, the Chamber of Commerce has a new board of directors, and I will be facilitating their strategic planning board meeting this coming weekend, and that, the goals and the outcomes from that meeting will be talked about at the annual dinner, which is January 25th, and it's being held at Lucky Seven Casino's Event Center, yes. And the new president of the board is Linda Ging, just so you know, and I have asked Linda Horn from Center Coast Hospital to make a presentation to the council at our next council meeting. She confirmed for the 20th, which is Monday. However, I forgot that the meeting is Tuesday, so I'm waiting for her confirmation on whether Tuesday will work, but I'm confident that if not, it'll be soon.
Thank you. I had the ability to, or I had the, it's my honor, actually, to attend an informal dinner with Congressman Huffman, and that was a good opportunity to meet the congressman again, to shake his hand and listen to what he had to say about what's happening in Washington and the frustrations and also the possibilities. He's a very positive congressman. He's a very positive man, and he thinks things are going to get better, so we certainly hope that happens. I, too, will be meeting with Mr. Ward and be discussing the needs of Delnart County and what he has in store for us were he to be elected. I wanted to use this opportunity, too, to thank our maintenance crew that went up to the Big Rock Community Services District in Hauchi to help them with their emergency water issue. This is something that was done two days before Thanksgiving, and you were already, three days maybe, you were already on a skeleton crew, and I just appreciate the efforts that the city made to help out a special district outside of the Crescent City, so. Did I say, what did I say?
Thanksgiving.
Well, you got there real early. Christmas.
Yeah, I agree. I was very proud of our assistance there.
Yeah, so thank you, and please thank your crew for us as well. Okay, so there being no other business before us, we'll go ahead and adjourn to January 21st, 2014. Thank you all for coming.